Is Margaret Hoffman, our planning coordinator. Ms. Virginia Rogers, who is my co-chair, and Weeks, myself, Peter Clay, David Anderson, and Pasquale. Are the members of the board. And then we have a number of people from the public. Or I think the first item on the agenda, which is a continued public hearing. I need to recuse myself from that being in a butter. And I believe Dan Pasquale does as well. I'll let him speak for himself. So I'm going to turn the gavel, the virtual gavel over to Ms. Rogers to chair this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I would like to open up this continued public hearing for the Arbor Street definitive subdivision. Three members are present currently at the meeting. David Anderson, Peter Clay, and myself, Virginia Rogers. And I would like to ask.
I'm going to recuse myself.
So there will be the three of us. We will be taking information from everyone, but I will do it in a very specific order. When you are called upon to comment, please identify yourself with a record with your name and address or affiliation. So Mr. Deculus, would you like to begin by giving us a report on the items that you have submitted? And any changes that you have made in the plan since our last meeting?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is Jim Deculos representing Susan and Jeff Hamilton. I'm their civil engineer and we have responded to comments from the town's consultant EBI as well as requests from your planning coordinator, Margaret Hoffman. All those requests have been satisfied. Margaret received final plans last week and there was two modifications to the plan. I believe there were sheet C2 and C4. She requested that building setbacks be shown on sheet C2, demonstrating where a building could be constructed under current zoning on that lot. She has it on the screen before you. Mark, Margaret, is it possible to go full, fuller screen with that?
That's about as large as I can go.
Okay.
It's full on my screen, Jim.
Okay. So what you see on this plan is the building setback allowances on Lot 6. And then we also added total frontage available for Lot 6 as well as the remaining frontage for Lot 5. On sheet C4, we added, under Margaret's request, we added street lamps at the entrance to the driveway. And we also eliminated the northerly driveway entrance to the Hamilton's house. So the Hamiltons now only have, would only have one entrance to the 60 Arbor Street house that exists. Other than that, we addressed all of EBI's concerns and on February 4th, they issued, issued the board a letter and Margaret a letter stating that in their opinion, all of the requirements of the zoning bylaws and the rules and regulations of the planning board have been achieved. So that's where we stand right now and be glad to answer any questions.
Virginia, I'm sorry, you're muted. Yeah, Virginia, you're gonna have to unmute. Sorry. See it? Should be down the bottom corner.
All right, sorry about that. Confused here. So the peer reviewer.
I don't see Chris, Chris Iannucci, are you here? Oh, I don't see Chris, our peer reviewer. He would be here. I'm sorry, I don't see him here. I have his final report, Virginia, if you want, I can bring that up on the screen.
That would be good.
Yep, let me, okay, let me do that. Share. Okay, this is Chris Iannucci's final report. And if you want, I can read it, Virginia, into the record.
Sure.
Okay. It was addressed to me, Margaret Hoffman, dated February 4th, 2021. Dear Ms. Hoffman, EBI Consulting, EBI on behalf of the Town of Wenham's Planning Board has completed a preliminary peer, peer review of the above referenced application. The applicants are John and Susan Hamilton. The engineer responsible for the preparing the application is John Deculus. The following documents are submitted as part of the application. The engineer has submitted responses dated January 29th, 2021 to EBI's former comments dated January 20th, 21, regarding the proposed development at 60 Arbor Street in Wenham, Massachusetts. Upon review of the engineer's responses, EBI has no further comment on the site plans prepared by the engineer and finds that the project as proposed has been satisfactorily designed in conformance with the Wenham Town bylaws and subdivision rules and regulations. We trust the contents of this letter satisfy your current needs. And should you have questions, you can contact Christopher Iannucci. And I'm sorry that Chris is not here. I did talk to him the other day and I thought he would be here, so. But this was the last report that we had gotten from, from EBI. They have gone back and forth several times and whittled down all of the issues that had been identified in previous peer reviews to get to this point.
Now, as it turns out that Margaret Hoffman is next on our agenda to give the board her report.
Yeah, thank you, Virginia. Up until this point, we've had a lot of back and forth. And I haven't really given the board a report on where we stood with everything that's come in. We've taken each week or each month by month, kind of piecemeal. So if you, if you can bear with me, I'd just like to read my report, which outlines what, what's happened a little bit and where I feel we stand with the project at this point. So thank you. The applicant submitted the application in February of 2020 seeking approval of a minor street under the Wenham Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land for a definitive subdivision at 60 Arbor Street. The application showed a plan at the time dividing the property to create two house lots. One to contain the existing house and the second would create a lot of frontage on a newly created subdivision roadway. The property is own residential. It falls within the Aquafor Protection District and within a DEP approved Zone 2 Wellhead Protection Area. The initial application requested waivers from several provisions of the town's rules and regulations. The applicant was informed that the board was not inclined to consider waivers for this project. The applicant then submitted several revised plans, which have resulted in the final plan dated February 10th, 2021, that have addressed the issues that are identified through interdepartmental and peer review. Town staff has reviewed the project and no outstanding issues remain from the staff. The applicant has responded to all items brought up in staff and peer reviews, revised items, and some clarification on items was requested and submitted. They have requested one waiver from section 4.7.5.4, the eight inch water main. We have received a letter from the Water Superintendent indicating that he will be satisfied with the proposed one inch water main as long as they adhere to the requirements of the Wenham Water Department's standard specifications for installation of domestic water services. The Water Superintendent has submitted a memo with conditions that can be included in the decision if the project is approved. The applicant has requested a waiver from the requirement for sidewalks. However, our rules and regulations do not specifically require sidewalks, but leave it to the planning board to determine whether sidewalks are necessary. Section 4.1.4.3 states sidewalk shall be provided on one or both sides of streets when in the opinion of the board they are warranted. The board should make a formal determination pertaining to sidewalks again if the project is approved. A stormwater report has been submitted, reviewed by peer review, and deemed to be satisfactory. The applicant has supplied language for a deed restriction that would indicate that any owners of the property would be responsible for maintenance of the stormwater system. This is intended to be a private way. All maintenance, snow plowing, and rubbish pickup will be the responsibility of the owner of Lot 6. This would be reflected in a deed restriction that would be recorded with the subdivision decision. Town Council has told us that a separate deed restriction may not be necessary. If the board votes to approve, this could be included as a condition. The rules and regulations require that the board approve the name of the proposed street. The applicants are proposing the name Hamilton Circle, I believe. An environmental assessment report was submitted in June 2020 prior to several revisions being made to the plans. A revised environmental assessment report has been submitted that addressed some items that had to be changed with the revised plans. We have received comments from the following departments: the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Board of Health, the Tree Warden, the DPW, the Water Department, and the Assessor's Office. None of the, all of their comments have been addressed by the applicant. Abutter's comments have been received throughout the hearing process. All letters or email comments have been sent to the applicant when responses were required. The applicant's engineer has responded to letters received by the abutters. Originally, there were a few issues brought up by the abutters. At this time, the, we've heard the abutters have enlisted an attorney and an engineer. All documents that they have been provided. I received a letter from Deborah Eliason today on behalf of the abutters. It came in about 1 o'clock today. And I will leave it up to them to explain that letter. Last week, I spoke with the applicant's engineer and requested a few items and they responded on Monday with all of the items that I requested. I have at this time no further outstanding issues. The applicant's engineer has been responsive to our request for information and revisions. I believe if the board chooses to approve the subdivision, they would need to vote on the waiver from the requirements of section 4.7.5.4. And you could include in your vote a statement that sidewalks are not required if that's your decision. I do have some recommendations and I have a draft of conditions if the board goes in that direction this evening. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you. The concern, the I think at some point we need to look at the conditions and particularly the ones that are specific to this project instead of the ones that are specified for every subdivision. So if you would like to do that now or later, probably done my first question.
Yeah, well, Virginia, I have a list of special conditions that I believe would be appropriate if the board were to decide to approve the subdivision. And there are about 10 of those. And then, of course, each subdivision has a large number of general conditions that apply to each subdivision. But those would, could be discussed after the board were to make their decision.
So there's, there's nothing in the, in the conditions that that would be material to our making the decision?
No, I think if your decision again was to approve prior to making that decision, I think we should have, you know, try to determine if the board's inclined to do so. Then I could give you, I can give you the list of proposed special conditions if you want to do that at any time. I could do that now if you want.
Well, let's, let's get some comments from the rest of the board. If there's anyone David or Peter have some questions for anyone, then we, we could perhaps put that off for a little bit. So I, I, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. Peter Clay, Planning Board. I found that the report from the Eliason Law Office was interesting. And I think we should talk about what's in that, what's in that report and actually recommendation at some point.
Peter, we have not really had time to review that letter. Nobody in the office has, has reviewed it. Neither has the peer reviewer, or I don't believe Town Council either has had an opportunity to fully review it.
Okay, that's, I get it. You know, it came in at 1 this afternoon. But I don't, I don't feel, I think we should let Town Council and others have enough time to really look at this and examine it before we make a decision on whether we go forward with 60 Arbor Street or not.
Okay, so I will be calling at the end of this if we have all of the information that we need to close the hearing. So you can, you're free to make that statement at that time about what you think we still need to, we still need to know.
Well, and I think also Deculus and Crowe and crew should probably have a chance to also read this and, you know, respond as well.
I'll take that. I'm not certain how to respond to that or if I need to. So thank you for your statement.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to respond to the Eliason letter as well as the letter from Peter Stepinski when the time is appropriate.
This is Dave Anderson, if I may.
Yes.
I agree with Peter. I read the letter that came in today and I think that it warrants further consideration, but also explanation in my mind. And if Attorney Eliason is here tonight, I would, I would be interested in hearing more about certain points raised in her letter. If that's something that others feel would be valuable as well.
Is, is Attorney Eliason present?
Yes, I am.
So can you respond?
What I can do is I can go through my letter or I can answer questions, whatever you'd prefer.
Let's go through it.
Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester, Mass. And I represent Mary Ann Cannon, Cannon, who is a direct abutter to the property at 13 Foster Street. Ms. Cannon and the other abutters have opposed the project since it was filed a year ago. And it's our position that it was not compliant with the subdivision rules and regulations then and the zoning bylaw, and it's not compliant now. This afternoon, we did send in an analysis from, of the planning board subdivision rules and regulations by Merrimack Engineering Services. And I believe that someone was supposed to be on the call tonight from that company. I'm not sure whether they are. But many of the issues that were raised by Merrimack, as Ms. Hoffman pointed out, were not raised by the planning board's peer reviewer. And many times a peer reviewer will concentrate on the major issues in front of the board with regard to the project. But the many issues that were pointed out by Merrimack should have been addressed by the applicant. There should have been waivers requested. And then they should have been examined by the board. But the waivers have not been requested. So I would suggest to you that the plan is not in compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations because there are no waivers and they have not been discussed, other than the couple that were mentioned by Ms. Hoffman. One of the most important issues is the encumbrance on 70 Arbor Street. The proposed road encumbers the neighboring, neighboring property with a required 20-foot setback from the road onto their property. And that's shown on the plans at sheet C6 of the applicant. It also, I would suggest, converts their property into a corner lot because it now abuts on Arbor Street and abuts on the new proposed private way. That would give them two front yards. And if they have two front yards, the setbacks are 20 feet. Right now, they have a side yard and the setback is 15 feet. So this infringes upon the development of their property in the future and forever. And I would suggest to you that the applicant has no right, nor does this board have the authority to authorize that type of an encumbrance on their property without their consent. And they haven't consented. And in fact, they're opposing this plan. So if the board approves it as configured, I would suggest that it could constitute a regulatory taking because it's taking away some of their development rights. And for that reason, I think the plan should be rejected. Also, there's been an ongoing issue with regard to the calculation of the disturbed area. And early on, this question was asked and there's never been a calculation provided by the applicant nor has there been information with which the planning board could do its own calculation. He just makes a statement that it's 35,000 square feet of disturbed area. There's no backup. Doesn't include any yard area for the house. We don't even know whether it includes the house. We only have statements from him. I would suggest that you need to have something that's verifiable for something that is so important as disturbance of area. On sheet C2, as the applicant pointed out, the most recent plan shows a building envelope as the entire lot minus the setbacks. That's clearly more than an acre and it constitutes the potential for more than an acre of disturbance. Under the way the plan is labeled, the applicant would have the right to build anywhere within that area and to disturb as much soil as he wants to disturb in that area. At the very least, your decision should have a limit on the amount of area that can be disturbed. If he says it's 35,000 square feet that he's going to disturb, that should be a limit and a condition in your decision. There are also questions with regard to the special permits under the zoning bylaw 9.3 and 10.1.2. There isn't, again, there's not enough information to make that determination. I would suggest that the applicant should provide you with evidence that the thresholds have not been met. And he has not applied for those permits and a subdivision approval is not a substitute for those permits. With regard to the curb cuts and the intersections, again, the information hasn't been provided on the plans. The applicant states that while removing one of the entrances for number 60 Arbor Street, that that remaining entrance is now 65 feet away, but there's no dimension on the plan to show that. Similarly, there's no dimension on the plan to show that the driveway at number 70 is 65 feet away. And this is a safety issue. That's an issue that the subdivision rules and regulations are in place for, are to protect people. And if you have driveways that are too close to roads and cross streets, you have a difficulty of cars going in opposite directions pulling in and out. I would suggest that that could be improved and the safety could be improved if the entrance to number 60 was off of the proposed road versus off of Arbor Street. And that was what was proposed early on in the project plans, but at some point that was changed when the road layout was changed. Ms. Hoffman also referred to certain Water Department and Fire Department memos. And the ones that I have seen were plant, were at a time when they were reviewing plans that are different than the plans that are now before the board with a different road configuration. And the Water Department comment with regard to the one inch water line, there actually wasn't any comment specifically on the eight inch main. It said that it must be installed according to the water service specs, but it doesn't refer to what must be installed. So there really should be something specific that refers to the eight inch main. And perhaps I have not seen that. But the documents that I saw did not refer at all to the eight inch main. And with regard to the registered and recorded land, so there are lands that are we're in recorded land at the registry. And then there's a land court and the registered land gets recorded and filed with the registered land department. This property has both. So the plan has to be filed in both places. The engineer from Merrimack has determined that this plan does not meet the land court requirements. And I can't comment on whether that does. It's a survey issue. But in any event, it has to be recorded before there are any building permits issued or before any work is done. The same with the covenants, whether it's in the permit decision or if it's in a separate document. The decision and the covenants have to be recorded in both places. And I would suggest that that should be a condition of your decision. Also, on this last plan, the applicant has added two streetlights. And I don't know whether he was requested to do that or not. But the abutters would prefer that those streetlights not be there and that they be waived. They do little to improve the safety and they will create a nuisance for the abutters that live close by. So I would close by saying that the plan hasn't improved since last year. It still doesn't comply with the subdivision rules and regulations and the zoning bylaw. And it encumbers an abutting lot without permission of the lot owner. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Do we have anyone who would like to ask questions at this point?
I have a quick question, if I may. Ms. Rogers, Dave Anderson, Planning Board. Ms. Ellison, on the third point, the curb cuts.
I'm sorry, could we just ask who's speaking? Yes, it is, it's, identify yourself. It's Dave. Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. I couldn't see, I couldn't see who was talking.
I'm here, I'm here.
There he is.
I just want to know on the 65 foot, I realize that the plan doesn't, your representation is the plan doesn't show it. Do you think that it's that the distance isn't fact efficient? Or not? Is it compliant or is there an issue in terms of the distance?
I cannot tell from the plans whether or not it's compliant with the 65 feet.
Okay. Do you know, or do you know if it is or is not? I mean, let me, let me, do you have a reason to believe that it may not be?
It looks from some of the measurements, you know, just reviewing the plan, it looks like it may not be 65 feet, but I don't know for sure. There's no dimension on it.
If I, if I may, just continue, I think the point about the regulatory taking, the concern about that is of some interest to me. And I'm wondering, and it's okay if not, I realize that this came last minute. But I'm wondering if you're aware of any authority that would define what's happened here or what is proposed to happen here in the way that you described, namely that the creation of a private way would in fact create a corner lot and the side yard would now become a front yard. Or are you relying on the bylaws?
I'm relying on the definition in the bylaw.
Okay.
And those definitions vary from town to town, as I'm sure you know. If I could just add, even if that interpretation is incorrect, I don't think that there's any dispute that there is a 20-foot setback from the road itself. And that, as shown on the applicant's plan, also encroaches into 70 Arbor Street. So even if it does not go up the entire lot line, there's a certain portion of their property where the setback would be 20 feet rather than 15 feet.
Madam Chairwoman, may I give an opportunity, be given an opportunity to respond to Ms. Ellison's comments, her letter, and the comments from professional land surveyor Stephen Stepinski?
If it is germane to what the questions that she asked, yes.
There certainly are. Thank you. So as I understand it, Ms. Ellison's representing Mary Ann Cannon, but is arguing harm and possible aggrievement for the abutters Congdon and Richardson. The Congdon and Richardson property continues to maintain a significant viable use to their property. They can demonstrate no harm. They're not aggrieved from this. This project fully complies with the town zoning bylaws and the rules and regulations. And any impact to this project would be down gradient from the would be down gradient from the Congdon and Richardson property, as well as the property of Mary Ann Cannon. The Congdons and Richardson's own two-point-eight-one acres of land, and they have significant viable, remaining viable uses for their property. Their house was built in nineteen oh one. I believe that the Congdons and Richardson's bought their property in two thousand four. And they've put in addition on their property is as late as two thousand four. The sideline setback of that addition is eighty-two feet. What they're arguing is harm of a setback distance from fifteen to twenty feet. Again, their addition setback distance is approximately eighty-two feet. As to Mr. Anderson's comments about any precedent or case law regarding a regulatory taking, there is none. This is not a regulatory taking. Because the Congdons and Richardson's maintain significant viable use of the property, the case law is clear. There is no taking either regulatory or constitutional. As to her second point on the disturbed area, the thirty-five thousand square foot area applies to both the road and the house. If we are just to take the road, the disturbed area is less than seventeen thousand square feet. And as we have repeatedly stated from the beginning, and this project has been under your review for months, as Margaret mentioned, this project has gone through some significant review. It's, it's only related to the issue of are we creating adequate frontage for the creation of a new lot? That's what the Superior Court ruled, because as all of you who have been involved in this project know, this project goes back well over five years. And the project came back onto the planning board's plate in February of last year after the Superior Court ruling. The court was clear. There needs to be adequate frontage, and the roadway that the Hamiltons proposed need to be consistent with that frontage. That's what we've been working on for months. I don't think it's appropriate for the board to be considering a letter that's submitted to the board at one-thirty. I received it at two o'clock this afternoon. And I'd like to remind you that Stephen Stupinski's letter was written two days earlier. The question, on February ninth, the question is why has Ms. Ellison waited two days to get this report from Stephen Stupinski to you? As to Mr. Stupinski.
I would like to interrupt you at this point, and I would like you not to make any conjectures about why or what, why these have been proposed, and just deal with the, the actual factual statements that they made.
I'd be glad to, Mrs. Chairwoman.
So I think you, I think you have handled that already. You've, you've.
I, I have, I haven't addressed her third issue regarding the access driveways and their insufficient distance.
Yes, can you tell us the distance and is it on the plan?
It is not on the plan, and I have stated with my stamp that it's meets the sixty-five-foot requirement. Furthermore, as I stated in a letter to the board last week in response to EBI, section four point three that they're citing has to do with access of new driveways within subdivisions. This is not within a subdivision, this distance.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment. I appreciate your comments on that.
So I'd like to address Mr. Stupinski's comments, please.
Um, I think that that is for the board to determine. If you cannot give us any more factual information, then, then.
I, I do want to provide facts, Mrs. Chairman Women. That's what I'm trying to do right now.
Yes.
The greatest public threat from cars traveling along Arbor Street are from the north. There's a vertical crest in the road about three hundred feet to the north of the Congdon Richardson property, and the threat of public safety is for cars traveling southerly along Arbor Street. In fact, the driveway that they're suggesting for sixty Arbor Street to be moved on to the new roadway would be furthering, increasing harm to public safety. So I think it's safe for the driveway to stay where it is right now. As to the facts, the facts of Mr. Stupinski's comments, I'd like to address next. He alleges that there is no Massachusetts land court standard that was achieved. I'd like to remind the board, and I sent it to Margaret today, the registered division of the parcel that was occurred in two thousand thirteen by my father, John Decullos. It's land court parcel two, land court plan two zero three nine six C. John submitted this plan to the land court for division of a parcel that created mark, a budding landowner, Mark Liphart's parcel. His survey, his calculations were all reviewed by the land court, met and exceeded land court standards. Though, and furthermore, traverse calculations were provided to EBI on November nineteenth. The only trees that are required to be provided within the minimum setback distance are the only trees that are required to be shown on a plan as to Mr. Stupinski's point about trees not being adequately shown. Those trees under section three point three point, three point one nine in the rules and regulations are only required to be shown within the minimum setback distance to the roadway, to the proposed road. That's what we've done. We don't need to show the trees on the whole parcel.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Stupinski's comments are, are just, you know, regarding stormwater are unqualified. He's a professional land surveyor. He's not a professional engineer. The Department of Environmental Protection requires stormwater management reports and calculations to be provided by professional engineers, not land surveyors. I don't think any of these comments have any merit, and they are unqualified, and they're just flat out wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I respond to some of those comments?
I, I really, I'm reluctant to, to say that you, you cannot argue at this point, but this, if you have any factual information that you dispute that he said, then you may present that.
Well, I think with regard to the harm issue of the twenty feet versus the fifteen feet, it's not for Mr. Deculus to determine that harm, any, if it were an easement that he was put planning on having over their property, if he needed access over the property, whether it was six feet or three hundred feet, it wouldn't matter. And it's the same thing with taking away any of their ability to develop their property, no matter how small that might be. They would not be prohibited from putting a shed in a certain location at twenty feet perhaps versus fifteen feet. And with regard to the timing of this response, I would point out that Mr. Deculus many times has provided his plans just before the hearing, and in fact, this most revised plan came in yesterday. And with regard to the land court question, the land court has to approve this plan. It doesn't, it's irrelevant whether they approved an earlier plan for a subdivision. That's not the plan that's going to be going before them. This is a subdivision that will also need that approval. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Steve Stupinski, if I could.
Please identify yourself again. I'm sorry.
My name is Steve Stupinski from Merrimack Engineering.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to just bring up that our review of the plan was not to determine whether or not the board should find that the subdivision is warranted or not. It was literally a review of the subdivision regulations, item by item, to see whether or not the plans were compliant. Whether or not the stormwater complies with DEP or any other standard, we did not evaluate that. What we did do, though, is look through the regulations to determine what was met with the plans in terms of the form and the submission requirements. I know Mr. Deculus brought up specifically the land court. I would tell you that the plans that were submitted show registered land being subdivided. The plan does not comply with the land court requirements. I, I'm not saying that the survey wasn't accurate. I'm saying that there's no representation on the plan as to the class of the survey, and your regulations require that. The regulations require that the traverse information be shown on the plans. It's very clear what the regulation says. They can be submitted as papers, but they're not on the plans, and you require information for the determination of property lines, the central angle, the tangent, the, the intersection of the tangents. Those are required in the regulations. You require them, and he didn't show them. Monuments at all the beginnings and ends of curves, you require those to be shown. He didn't show them. Your maximum sideslope for grading is four to one. And he hasn't provided four to one side slopes. The leveling area is, you require, the board requires that the leveling area be at or above the top of the pavement edge. He shows it below. He has conflicts in his plan, not stormwater conflicts. He shows a typical cross section of his catch basin to have a four-foot-six-inch sump, but yet the grades on his plan indicate that there are four-foot sump or three-point-nine-nine feet. Your regulations require that the catch basins not be located at driveway cuts. His catch basin one is located right at the driveway cut. Your regulations stipulate the, the entranceway of curves have to have intersection radiuses of forty feet. He has an intersection radius of forty feet compounded with a ten-foot radius curve. The regulations don't speak to that. And I would say that if he had to comply with the full forty-foot radius, the configuration of the roadway would be different. So our report is to see whether or not the, the regulations that you promulgate were complied with with the submission. Things like signature blocks not in the correct location. I'm not saying that that's something bad or good for a subdivision plan. I'm just saying that it's not where it's called for to be in your regulation. The title sheet of the plan set has no title block in the lower right corner. And you require these things. So I'm not going to let Mr. Deculus cast aspersions on the facts. He can cast them on me because I'm a big guy. But he's not going to cast them on the facts. The facts don't lie. And the report that I prepared in the past several days, he's submitted revised plans that were subsequent to my actual review, and he's addressed some of those items. But if you look at the plans carefully, you'll see that there are not cross sections submitted every fifty feet as you require. There are not elevations along the profile as you require. The grading plan does not reflect the two-foot leveling area before the side slopes begin. That's something you require. So you require certain things that he hasn't provided. So I don't like aspersions being cast on me. Either they've been provided or they haven't been. It's got nothing to do with a survey of five years ago or ten years ago. It has to do with what the board is looking at now, what I saw, and what's being addressed. Not a personal aspersion to me.
Virginia, excuse me, if I, if I could interrupt. It's Margaret. I wanted to let you know that Chris Iannucci, our peer reviewer, was just on. Let me see where he's gone. He was just on. Oh, yeah, he is on, is on if you need to. If you'd like to ask questions of Chris. Chris was the EBI peer reviewer for the project. And I don't know whether Chris has had an opportunity to look at the recent letter we got today and has had an opportunity to look at the points that Mr., I'm sorry, the engineer has submitted. There he is.
Thank you, Margaret. For the record, my name is Chris Iannucci. I'm an engineer with EBI Consulting. We are the peer review consultant for this project. And to answer your question, no, I have not had a chance to review the letter. I was out in the field all day. This kind of speaks to the record of this project in that these submittals have been coming in last minute since I was involved with this project. And so I'm not at the mercy of an engineer who follows that type of, of policy to deliver plans to an agency where he's trying to achieve approval for a client at the last minute. I work in a timely fashion, an orderly fashion. I will echo Mr. Stupinski's comments that I will simply say that these fans, these plans to this day fall far short of your regulations as outlined in those subdivision control regulations, and I've grown tired of looking at them. I've grown tired of answering, trying to figure out responses to comments that I don't know where they belong, and I get responses that, and aren't responses, I just responses to say that we're going to do this and so be it. We don't, again, as Mr. Stupinski outlined, we don't opine as to whether or not the board should grant approval to these projects. We simply take the subdivision regulations and we go line by line, letter by letter, through those regulations, including the bylaw regulations. And it's either a yes or a no answer. There's no gray area. It either complies or it does not comply. And I'm going to tell you again tonight, finally, that this plan set, I have not seen the latest plan set, and I will guarantee you that it does not meet any of the regulations that stepped forth just moments earlier by Mr. Stupinski, including the issues with the profile, including the issues with the cross sections. This was, this is stuff that should have been nailed down by a entry-level engineer, quite frankly, diligent with AutoCAD and software of this nature. This is not something that I've seen in my thirty years of engineering experience. The nature and quality of this product falls far short of anything I've seen in quite some time. And that's all I'm going to say about it. Until I get some responsible answers and factual answers to my comments, I have nothing more to offer. It's completely at the mercy of the board and the discretion of the board to decide whether this gains approval. But I can tell you, from what I see, there's still discrepancies and nonconformance with the subdivision regulations up to it, including these slopes that are shown on the plans, which far exceed four to one. There is no level area identified, and I will, I will, I will, you know, mea culpa tonight that I did not point out the corner lot disposition, which is now rendered. And that's kind of been clouded for me with the suspicion of a private way and its interpretation by the town. To me, a private way is still a roadway. It should buy, it should abide by all the subdivision roadway regulations, including widths, cross sections, you name it. This does not, if you look at the driveway entrance in, in comparison to the, the entrance to the private right of way in comparison to the existing driveway at sixty Arbor Street, you'll see some very sloppily laid line work in there where they actually intersect one another. And I don't know if it was the intention of the engineer to allow intersecting radii to be proposed on a public way, but that's completely, completely unacceptable. And my advice there is to close that driveway permanently and to, and to add the dimensions for the sixty-five-foot requirements, as I do not believe that the driveway openings apply to subdivisions within, to homes within a subdivision. It applies to a roadway opening as it's interpreted to be an intersection with an intersecting roadway. That's my interpretation, and that's all I have to say.
Madam Chairwoman, may I get a chance to respond?
At not at this point, thank you. We have his opinion, and we have your plan in front, in front of us and your explanation of that plan.
Did the board receive Mr. Iannucci's written opinion on February fourth?
Yeah, um, excuse me, Virginia. I'm sorry. It's Margaret. Chris, you, you did submit a letter to us saying that you felt that the plan conformed to all the regulations and the, and the, the bylaws. So I think there's a bit of confusion on the part of the board at this point with your, your explanation just now. So I'm not sure if we should go from here. If you.
I don't think that the, it's really, it's a tireless effort at this point to go back and revise this plan over and over and over again. The mercy and time of us all is beleagoring this now. I'm not saying that this is, is not an undesignable project. This is absolutely a, a project. This is absolutely a a project that can be had. I agree with that. Do those plans portray that? No, I do not agree with that. But I'm at the point now to say, well, it's at the discretion of the board to 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 grant this private way in this subdivision as proposed with conditions to further comply with with the features that he needs to comply with. I mean, it's simple as that. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and write a letter every week to say, no, it doesn't comply. You've saw our responses, our responses, his response to our comments have been not what we want to hear. It's, it does not conform. And we we continuously say comment is not adequate, response is not adequate. So I mean, there's nothing more to say. If you want to look at this thing and go, you know, with cross every T and dot every I, I will be happy to do that. But this plan, knowing it's been five years to develop this, I would have thought by now this would have been nailed shut. This is, we're talking about technical issues here, Mr. De Cullis, that quite frankly, I'm not sure you understand at this point. I I really, I have not even reviewed your stormwater. And I really, I'm, I I'm, I'm, you speak to the term professional engineer. Are you a professional engineer?
Okay, I think, I think what what's happened is Chris came in kind of middle. Mike Clark was our peer reviewer on this from the beginning. He's been on this case for a long time. And unfortunately, Mike became ill and couldn't take it. So Chris came in in the middle. And it kind of picked up where Mike left off. So that could be some of the the confusion that that we're seeing. So I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm going to ask the or the board to make a decision on to as to how you'd like to proceed at this point. We're getting some conflicting information. We're getting some. You know, now there have been issues brought up. And I think if the board would like to take more things into consideration, you know, I really don't know quite where we go from here. I ask Robin if you have any suggestions for what the board, how the board could proceed at this point.
Well, I, I mean, good evening, everyone. This is Robin Stein from KP Law Work Town Council. Good to see you all, at least virtually. I think that is, it's ultimately a decision of the board about, you know, what information they feel they need or don't need. You know, I can certainly offer some comment on some of what we've heard tonight if the board would like me to. I don't need to, it's up to you. There are other folks from the public here. And so to the extent that others may have commented and have come tonight, I think it's fair to give them a chance to to comment. But, you know, ultimately, I think the the board has to have a conversation about where they are on this project. And then I shouldn't answer any specific questions.
Would you, would you advise at this point that we continue the public hearing?
Again, I, that's not, you know, that's certainly something the board can do. That's within your discretion. I, you know, there are board members that have expressed an interest in in having an opportunity to review some of this material more. But that's not really, that's not a call for me to make.
I see. So if we, if we decide that we have enough information in front of us to make, to to deliberate on this, then we could, we could ask, I could ask the members. And then we would close the public hearing and start deliberation.
If if the board feels as though it's ready to vote, then they can go that route. Again, there are other members of the public here. So I would want to make sure that anyone who came tonight had an opportunity to speak on the project. We would close the public hearing. You know, if you're right, I personally, and it's not, it's not really a legal issue. But personally, I usually recommend that public hearings stay open until the board's really ready to deliberate and vote. Because once you close the public hearing, the opportunity to, that any questions with the applicants with the public is closed. But, you know, that's a discussion for the board to have amongst the three of you, where you are on this project.
Yes, so for the, at last, then, if there's, there's any more input and.
Madam Chairwoman, I really deserve a chance to reply to Mr. Iannucci's comments. I just think they're on call for. I mean, particularly since when he put comments in writing, clarifying and affirming that everything was achieved and compliant, fully compliant with zoning bylaws and the rules and regulations. Those were on call for remarks. I'm a professional civil engineer. I've been working on this project since May of last year, taking it over from my father. I've done everything I can to comply with board's requirements, met with Michael Clark and Margaret. I've done everything and our firm has done everything we can to address the comments of EBI. The comments disparaging remarks are inconsistent and wholly one hundred and eighty degrees off from what Mr. Iannucci wrote on February fourth. And I don't understand how the board can take oral argument like this from Mr. Iannucci completely in opposite. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chairwoman. Mrs. De Cullis, I I stand by my my letter on February fourth. As I said, if we were to hold this project till you had every every T crossed and I dotted on those plans. And I did not, I overlooked a lot of what Mr. Stupinski said. I did not look at this from, did he, you know, cross all those Ts? Did he do all those Is? If we were going to do that, you know, we would be waiting weeks and months. You know that. We've been down this road with you for, since I've been involved, and it's a good six months. So I'll stand by my letter. I think that this project, as I see it right now, is very, very close. And I think it's worthy of a decision tonight. Am I saying that those plans exactly conform to the, no, they did not. And you've had five years for them to conform. So I'm not going to wait. I I don't truly believe that they will ever conform. But all I'm saying is the plans are in enough shape. They've taken enough shape since I've been involved for the board to offer a decision tonight. I take back my remarks. If you're offended, I apologize. However, I still feel strongly that the quality of these plans fall short of what those subdivision regulations call for. However, I feel it's worthy of a decision and you are almost there.
Why did you write what you did, Mr. Iannucci? Why did you write that on February fourth?
Because I feel like it's a waste of time for you to go back and.
Why didn't you say that in writing? Why are you offering this now?
Gentlemen, look, I'm trying to get this to a decision point for you. It it's not up for me to decide, you know, these other issues that came to light tonight. It it's really not. I gave you what I feel is this is a project worth a decision tonight. I'm not here to opine whether it should be approved or not. That's not for me to decide. I think it's in general conformance with the subdivision rules and regulations. Is it in a hundred percent conformance? No, it's not.
Why didn't you say that in writing? Why didn't you say that in writing?
Because then you wouldn't get a decision tonight if I put that in writing. You would have been continued again. If you want me to resend that letter, I'll be happy to resend that letter and say, okay, give me a set of plans to Mr. Stupinski's and my, and those subdivision quality. And we're going to be months in the making. We're going to be months in the making, Jim. Listen, when I get to those cross sections, they're not even legible. They're not legible.
I'm sorry, if if we could just hold off on the argument at this point. And Virginia, if you would like to speak, I think you can make that decision with the other board members as to how you'd like to go forward at this point.
Thank you.
I would, I would recommend, at least, again, just checking to see if there's any other members of the public that came tonight.
Thank you.
They, you know, implicate how the board members feel about where you are.
Ms. Rogers, if I may, it's Dave Anderson, planning board. Robin, you may not be. But if you were in a a position to opine on the theory of a regulatory taking, if you are, I'd be grateful to hear your opinion on that. If you're not, then you're not, and that's okay too.
I mean, I certainly haven't had any opportunity to research it today. But in my opinion, in my knowledge of of the area of subdivisions, I don't see this as a regulatory taking. You know, it's not a factor within the planning board's scope of review under the subdivision rules and regulations under the subdivision control act, in my opinion, that this may or may not have a zoning impact on a budding property. And and I say that also with the understanding that I don't necessarily know. I did take a look at the definition of corner lot in your zoning bylaw. It's less than clear to me if this would be considered a corner lot. That's a question for the zoning enforcement officer. That's not, you know, a question for for anyone else. However, again, the the fact that it may trigger a twenty foot setback versus fifteen foot setback on an already developed property, I I personally do not see this as a regulatory taking. But again, I just received the letter today. If that's helpful. You know, again, if if this plan was was one hundred percent compliant with your regulations and did not require any waivers, in my opinion, you couldn't deny it just because it had a zoning impact on you. So I guess that's the approach that I'm looking at. In my opinion.
We have anyone else who would like to, anyone of the others that is present, like to make any comments about their concerns or more information that they need? Anne Weeks would like to make a comment?
I would like to to comment as an butter to Anne Weeks. My husband, Eric Lustig, and I live at eleven Foster Street. I would like to go back to the question of how much disturbed area there is. We heard seventeen thousand square foot or something like that for the roadway. We've heard through the history of this process of forty thousand foot, we've heard thirty five thousand feet. But all we have really is the say so of the applicant. There's no written anything anywhere. There's no delineated building envelope that would limit the grading and earth removal. There are grading and earth removal zoning and subdivision and town bylaws that need to be complied with if a large area is going to be graded and the contour is changed, which is, everybody knows if they've taken a look at this property, there are some substantial grades and contours on the existing property. And the most recent plan shows a buildable area of, you know, that entire lot, which includes the hill. And if that were taken down, it would be a lot more than thirty five thousand square feet. There's no calculation and there's no, there's not a a limit on on what can be disturbed. And, you know, that's a significant concern to those of us who was backyards about the property. And that's, this isn't a new issue. This isn't something that just came in last night because I put it in a letter. Well, it was in a letter four years ago or five years ago. And then it was in a letter again, we've submitted three or four or five letters during the course of this project, always pointing out the fact that there's no limit on the grading here, even though the the zoning bylaw requires that. It requires that if you're under a certain amount, you know, you don't need a special permit. If you're above a certain amount, you do, and you have to apply for it and get it. And we can't tell whether or not, all we have is the word of the applicant at this point.
I think Ms. Cannon would like to speak.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Mary Ann Cannon, thirteen Foster Street. I find this discussion tonight, along with the others, about the sixty Arbor Street embarrassing for the town of Wem. I think this is something being pushed in. And the credibility of the planning board is really of concern to me. That's all I have to say.
Any other members of the public?
Hi, this is Chow Thongden at seventy Arbor Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would just like to comment that, you know, I'm no expert on looking at plans. I have looked at this plan numerous times. I did my own little grading calculation to realize that if there was a two foot level area in you know, going into the right of way, that that would leave only eight feet for rising up apparently at least four feet, which is not a it's not a two to one ratio in any way. And so in just looking at it, I realized that the grading, that simple grading along our our property line is not possible. And I think that's been reiterated here. The only way they could get that would be to move the road further away from the property line, which would also help to deal with the twenty foot setback issue. I've also looked at the plan and it's, in in some ways, it's just self ambiguous. There's a place in there where obviously there's drawing after drawing that shows an island of sixty foot diameter. And yet there's a statement on the plan that says it's a forty foot diameter. Sounds like a small thing, but that ambiguity allows the the person who's executing the plan to do basically whatever they want. There's also a, what they call a typical cross section of the road. And it shows it's being sixteen feet wide. There's only one place on this plan where that road is sixteen feet wide. It's not typical. I I just feel like the number of inconsistencies and the significant number of noncompliances. I do come from an engineering world. It's software engineering. Needless to say, I work for a bank and I would doubt that you would want your bank accounts to be managed the way this project is being managed. Thank you.
So again, given all that we've heard, and I'm asking specifically the members of the planning board, do you feel that you have enough information to make a decision on this application as it stands?
Ms. Rogers, we have Amy Richardson who'd like to speak.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Rogers, it's hard to see everybody on the screen. I I just wanted to address that setback issue as well. I know that Mr. De Cullis was questioning our concern about that since that's being, that was raised by an attorney that's working for Mary Ann Cannon. We do have a concern about that. We we found out that that actually extends along our whole property line so that it's not just where the cul-de-sac intersects our property line. It would go the whole entire way. So that should we ever decide to build a shed or or a garage, we would have to change that. And I think his his argument is specious. They have over an acre or two acres of land. They can build anywhere they want. I I feel that that's, I don't feel that this project has the right to take that land away from us in terms of how we choose to use it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Doesn't seem so.
I don't see anyone else.
Thank you. So again, my question is to the members of the planning board, do you have enough information? Both what we've heard tonight and what we see on the plans to make a decision about approving this application?
This is Dave Anderson. I I guess my short answer is no. I think we have a lot of information. I think that I would like to know more. Have a more informed opinion about this concept of a regulatory taking. I heard what Robin said as an initial impression, but I understand the theory and specifically what Ms. Richardson just said. One of the things that's significant to me, I'm going on here, can I continue or do you want me to stop?
Sure.
Is the concept here that I'm not sure that this is the right plan for this town. But I'm also sensitive to the right of the landowner. And to see the theory here that there would be an adverse an adverse consequence to another landowner that we haven't yet seen is, um, of concern to me. And obviously that just popped up today. And I, I am of the opinion that it doesn't matter that it just popped up today. I think it's an important point that needs to be clarified. That being said, um, I don't need a whole lot more information here. I think we have a, a pretty full-some record. So that's my perspective.
So I shared, uh, David's, uh, can, you know, like clarification on that regulatory takeover. That having been said, um, I think we do have enough information and the fact that this project's been going on forever. Um, and that the request for information and, you know, compliance in terms of plan, all aspects of planning, isn't happening. Yeah, I, I can understand why somebody thinks that, uh, it's a shame, shameful day for the planning board to let this continue.
So, um, Ben, uh, can, can I ask for one of you to recommend the motion that we, um, we close the hearing? And, uh, and enter deliberations with the information that we have?
I move that we, Peter Clay, planning board, so moved that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
And, uh, so, uh, all in favor, Mr. Clay?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And, uh, Ms. Rogers, aye. So, um, I, I guess that's before we stand?
Yeah. Virginia, um, so I think, uh, Robin, if I, maybe you could help out at this point. Well, um, so the boards closed the hearing and do you advise that they deliberate this evening or think they could take all of this information, digest it, um, and come back with their decision on the March 11th meeting? You're, I'm sorry, Robin, you're on mute.
Sorry. Trying to save everyone from hearing my dog bark. Uh, you know, again, I think if the board is in a position to deliberate, it's great. And, um, to the extent that it wants to vote a written decision at its next meeting, it's certainly helpful to have public deliberation now so that, you know, try to formulate that written decision, um, you know, which always makes things more clear when you have a writing to vote. But again, it's, it's the board's pleasure how it wants to proceed. Again, it's the board's pleasure. To the extent that this is going to continue into the March meeting, um, you know, given the timeframes that apply to subdivisions, I would ask if the applicant will be willing to sign, um, a brief extension, at least giving the board a little time past the April meeting, just in case something happened with March that there's an, an issue where for whatever reason you couldn't meet or there was a problem, just to give you a little bit of that cushion because you know, the timeframe shortcuts we use are, are running. So, um, you know, that's just something I'll throw out there.
So, uh, Margaret, um, just so that everybody else knows, aside from just us planning board people, um, you did clarify that since we're a five-person planning board, um, two people have recused themselves. So all three of us need to vote in favor for this to pass.
Yes, in order to approve it, we need all three members to vote the same.
I would, I, I would like to just, um, comment that I think that, that there was such, um, intense and emo- emotional atmosphere that has been created tonight that I would, um, request that we deliberate, we put off the deliberation until the next meeting.
Uh, I, I concur, Peter Clay.
That makes sense to me as well, Dave Anderson.
Um, Virginia, what I will do is send each member the list of conditions that I've already drafted. And, uh, then we can discuss them at the meeting on March 11. I think it's important, though, that we confirm with the applicant that we can get, um, a signature on an extension of time. Uh, you know, and to continue the time for the board to act. Uh, Jim, do you know if your, your clients will agree to that?
Um, it, it's a little confusing to me, Margaret, the need for an extension of time. Um, Ms. Stein sort of, uh, described it a little bit, but I, I don't understand why you need additional time.
Robin, would you mind explaining that to them legally?
Again, and I, I certainly can't give legal advice to the applicants, but, um, by my calculations, it looks like the deadline for the board to act on this application and to file its decision with the town clerk is in the, toward the end of March. And again, I know you're planning a meeting in March, so there shouldn't be any issue. But given that we're getting close to that deadline, um, I just thought it was a, a good practice to ask for an extension just in case. Um, especially when you're al- already working with three members, you know, if there was any issue with meeting, I mean, again, you could schedule a, a special meeting on 48 hours notice. I'm sure that would I, it was just something that I thought would be, you know, good practice to mention.
I think we cannot, uh, have 48 hours notice because of, of the publication.
No, no, Virginia, it's, uh, it would be okay to do it. If you had to have a special meeting for this in case, you could have a, you don't need to public notice anymore.
Just, I mean, it, it would go on the agenda, but it's a deliberative meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, again, you know, presuming you're, you're going to meet again, I think, believe it's March 11th, you should be fine.
Yes.
You know, and so long as you take a vote that night and it gets written up and filed with the clerk. I just, you know, when we get close to deadlines, I like to ask, I think it's good practice.
Thank you. And, uh, so, Ben, I think we have agreed that the, do we need an official motion that we will, that we will deliberate, um, at the next meeting?
I think you could, you could have a motion just to continue deliberations in this matter to your March 11th meeting. I think we would do that. That would be at 7:30 likely by Zoom as well. Um, and, you know, we can, you know, I don't know what the applicant's, um, opinion is on, on the extension topic. You know, as long as you can still get this done by the end of March, should be fine.
So this is Peter Clay, um, uh, suggesting that we continue this, the deliberations until our meeting in March. I believe it's March 11th.
Yes. Yes, 7:30.
Do you second?
I will second it.
Come on.
I'll say.
Okay, so then, if, if all of us are in the favor, would you, um, Rogers, votes aye?
Anderson, aye.
Peter, you're muted.
Mr. Clay says he's, uh, unmuted and in favor.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, so, Virginia, uh, I will come up, you know, I will send the board the conditions that we've come up with. Robin, do you, is it appropriate for me to put those conditions on the website?
If, um, why don't you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
You and I can, before we move on, though, and Mr. Phil says, do you know, I don't, I believe your clients are on, or would you be in a position to agree to a brief extension or?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
So, I mean, depending on how the board does decide to vote, I don't know which way they'll vote yet, but if there was to be an approval, I could have a list of those conditions and I will send them to the board and, uh, Virginia, Robin and I will work on those.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Great. So, um,
So are Dan and, and out of jail now?
Yeah, I think we can turn it back over to Ian.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers, thank you very much for cheering.
Yes, and I would, I, I would like to, uh, request that I be dismissed from the meeting at this point.
I, I think that is perfectly understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, everyone.
Very much for doing it under a difficult circumstance.
Margaret, do you need me to stay on?
Uh, no, Robin, I think we're fine. I'll
The only thing, before you go, Robin, the only thing is, I was going to ask to add to the agenda the, a discussion of the very nice memo you put together on the Housing Choice Act of 2020.
Next meeting. For tonight or for the next meeting?
Well, I was kind of hoping it would be for tonight, just, uh, since you're here, but if you're not prepared to do that, um,
Well, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, no.
I know, it was going to come up under matters. It's not reasonably anticipated.
Why don't we put it on for the next meeting?
That sounds good, and I will say goodnight to you.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Robin.
Hi, everyone.
So, Vicky over the chair, and is Dan back? Yes, he is. Uh, we now have all five members without, uh, four members, I'm sorry, because Ms. Rogers has really done an incredible job. I appreciate her work under difficult circumstances.
Yeah, I'll say.
And I would like to add that I will be present, I just will not be part of the deliberation. So I will be in, in, in the audience, so to speak.
Fair enough, fair enough. Well, thanks. Um, we have, um, a number of administrative matters remaining. I, I know the hour is late. Uh, the first one is a letter of support for special legislation to allow the town to continue operating with one uh, select person, select board members, because we had two resignations in January. And that would be until, uh, a second board member is elected at a special town election in April 2021. I, um, received this letter from the acting town administrator. Um, I cannot sign on behalf of the planning board without your concurrence. Um, and I would like to have a vote, um, on that. So I think you have the letter in your package, Margaret.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up. Just, if you give me one second, I'll bring it up.
That would be great.
Thank you.
I, I'm just willing to say I, I'm all in favor.
I mean, it does seem as though the town should be able to do its business between now and April.
Could I just say that I think we should actually, excuse me, I think we should actually get some information about this and possibly deliberate since I think this just popped up on the agenda.
I, I agree. That's why I'm asking Margaret to pull it up and we can talk through it.
All right.
I, you know, I don't know if you have the legislation in front of you to pull up too. You just go through what it says.
Right, so, do you see the letter on your screen yet?
No, we see the agenda.
Okay, let me stop, share. Okay, let me do, do a new share. On one sec. Do you see the letter now?
We do. You also have the legislation you can pull up.
Yes, I do. Yep. Okay, let me get that. Okay, and I just stopped sharing this, and I have to go back, share this. Do, do, here it is. This is the, um, highlights of the act. Is that what you're looking for? This is what I was sent. And I'm sorry, you're muted again.
No. You don't have the, you don't have the actual text of, because I would, I would imagine it's pretty brief.
So yep, let me see what, what gave me there. Hold on. Yep, here it is. Okay. Share, go back here. Okay, try that. Can you see that? The Warren article? And that's a special act, the text. That was what town council, and I'm sorry, you're muted again.
Yes, I know. Notwithstanding the other requirements that would otherwise require us to have a full slate, um, that, um, we can continue operating as a town with one uh, remaining select person until the, um, April 8th special meeting, right? Or a special election. And this is like, this is, well, I don't know, Dan, you might probably know more about this than I do, but I would think of this as a special act that is an unusual circumstance. It's only for a limited period of time. And it basically allows the, um, select board to continue operating.
It is, it is definitely an unusual circumstance. I will agree with that. Um, my question about this is, what exactly is needed in order, um, to continue to operate? And what exactly are we being asked to do and what effect does it have since we are the, the planning board? And I see Mr. Cheeseman's here and he's raised his hand, so.
Right. Well, that's, that's a great, a great segue. Mr. Cheeseman, do you have something to, you'd like to help us with?
I'll give you the background. So, town council and, uh, our very experienced interim town administrator and myself looked at what are the minimum essential items that need to be accomplished during this period of time with the one selectman, or what events might occur that we would need coverage? So, uh, we have had discussions with Senator Bruce Tar and Representative Brad Hill. And the special act would go through the governor's office to the legislature. Uh, the, uh, our two, uh, legislators, uh, expressed the, uh, their concerns that, uh, given all the other competing acts and COVID and everything else going on in the legislature, that it would be a good idea to show broad support for the special legislation by obtaining support from the various committees. So, uh, Tom Younger sent out the draft, um, letters for each of the major committees in the town to, uh, sign on. So the special act essentially will validate items that the town does while it has one selectman. So the fact that, that we're going to have a special election, which would normally require a quorum on the board of selectmen, will be validated by the legislature, say that yes, only one member of the board could call the special election. And so given the timing of this, it's probably going to be retroactive. But what it does, it gives the town coverage that says, yes, the legislation was passed, that the Massachusetts state recognized the exceptional circumstances of two selectmen departing the board. And so we want to validate the election and the other actions we take. And as you saw in here too, it includes, uh, section four, that if I had conflict, that the continuity of government continues in that the town administrator could pick up that particular issue. So it's very limited, as you see in, um, the section two there, that, uh, you know, it's health and safety. It's, uh, essential items that we have to go because there has to be some method to call the town special election, to have the annual town meeting go on as scheduled in order to fill the, uh, the, uh, board of selectmen back up. But basically, the letter from the boards is simply going to be added to the legislation as a demonstration to the legislature that there is broad support in the town to, uh, address this special circumstance.
And, and which boards have been asked to provide letters? Is it elected boards?
Board of Health, uh, I think we got Board of Health assessors, FinCom, um, uh, Cemetery Commission, um, I think Veterans, uh, Committee and so forth down the list.
A2, we have one, uh, Tony fingered one, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's not just the planning board?
No.
It's not just elected boards, or is it just elected?
No, it's a raw number.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It was helpful. Does anyone have any questions about this before we, um, before I ask for a motion on the letter?
So, I, I do have a question. And, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, my question is, I, I'm still a little unclear on what is the minimum? what is the minimum that needs to be done in order to get us to April 8th and have two selectmen? Um, I, I, I understand the point that you may need authority to call the special election. What, what I'm unclear about is everything else, and my concern is that we're supposed to be a three-member Board of Selectmen. Um, we're down to just one through no fault of your own, I, I understand that. I think that it seems like the situation was created by Mr. Wilhelm's surprise resignation. Um, so, wh- what is it that, that really needs additional authority here?
Um, I'm, I'm wondering if, Margaret, if you could put up the other list that you had originally before I begged you for the language of this, of the statute, because that may answer, uh, Mr. Pascarello's question.
No, I have, do you mean the highlights of the act, Dan?
I, I'm not sure what the other thing was, I thought it was a list, you know, the highlights of the act, but it also said, I thought it was, um, these are the things that he's permitted to do, which I thought might answer your question.
Can you see that on the screen? Highlight?
I can, so, so.
It's giving Gary authority to do all these things, this is the list.
I, I understand, and, and, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just part of, part of the reason I'm asking these questions is because I've had less than 24 hours to, to respond to this, we just got this information last night. But, you know, bullet point three, address personnel or facility issues critical to the town, that is pretty vague and, and fairly broad. Um, some of these are, are fairly broad, so I, I'm, what I'm asking is, before we wholeheartedly endorse turning all authority over to just one member of the board to make all of these decisions, and I, and I know that this is just an advisory letter, I, I would like to know, what's the bare minimum that we, that we need to do in order to get us to April 8th?
I think the bare minimum is, uh, been reviewed by town council, and there's that list that, uh, some things clearly need requirement to open the warrant and stuff, others are contingency, that if there is a critical vacancy in the town, that, uh, I could, uh, fill it, and it will be validated after the fact at town meeting, and at, uh, when we have a full complement of the board of selectmen back.
So in other words, the town administrator?
The caveat's in there that, uh, you know, it has to fall within the categories of, uh, does not admit to delay, so it's only those things that, uh, clearly have to be done during the interim period.
And, and can you talk to us about the timing of the hiring of the town administrator?
The town administrator, so, uh, the, uh, that will occur after we have a full board. The, uh,
That's helpful, thank you.
TA Screen Committee, I think, had their first meeting, uh, Monday or Tuesday night this week, that, uh, the, uh, we will wait until we have the full complement after the May election, and the, we're targeting with the, um, community paradigm, the contractor that's assisting us in the search, that we're looking at the middle of May to, uh, have the final finalists come forward to the full board of selectmen.
I have one more question, um, for either Margaret or for you, Mr. Cheeseman, and that is, does this letter have to be signed tonight in order to be timely? And I'm not sure what is happening with special legislation.
So, it's kind of a, uh, the sooner the better, you know, the, oh, we sent these out to those committees that, uh, were meeting this week, so, uh, you know, if it's not signed, then I think the package will go forward anyhow. But, uh, you know, it's, uh, I think it's just an up or no, yes or no answer from the, the planning board, so, if you want to support this or not, because your next meeting's gonna be two or three weeks away, right? 11 March or something?
Months away, yeah.
Yeah, that's a march.
Yeah, so.
And, and you will have obviously done this by then, because it's.
Right.
Um, it, it, does any other member of the board, or, or Mr. Pascarello, you might have more questions, I don't know, any other questions from the board? If not, can I have a motion to, um, put this letter forward to permit me to sign the letter of support for an act relative to the continuance of town governance in the town of Wenham?
Also move.
Do I have a second?
Peter Clay says yes, aye.
And I have a vote. Mr. Clay, you, and, uh, gonna vote aye?
Aye.
Anderson, aye.
Pascarello?
You're abstaining.
Um, Ms. Rogers is not participating in this portion of the meeting. I will vote, uh, yes, aye, so that's, um, three ayes and one abstention.
So Gary, don't like, uh, become a dictator in the next, uh, two months.
No, I'll, as I told the other committees, you know, I am, my full intention is to defer everything that I can, and, you know, this basically, you know, it, in one way, given the timelines, this is just gonna give the town coverage after the fact that, uh, the special election or any other thing that occurs this interim really cannot be challenged.
No, I got it, I was joking.
Yes, and, and I have to say that, you know, I think if we were not in a public health crisis right now, I, I, I might have abstained myself, but I, I do think there may be things coming up that have to come to a vote. Uh, and I'm hope, I hope not, um, but I would like to give you authority to be able to do that, so, um, on a very limited basis, so, there we go. Um, the next, uh, item, the administrative item, is to discuss the master plan information session, which is February 25th. Margaret has put together a draft slide deck, she says I did it, but she was really mostly her work, and she and I spoke about it. Um, so, I, you know, I don't know if we want to run through those quickly.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
So, um, I was, I was at the CPC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about, you know, the, uh, the master plan came up, and so I, I kind of plugged it, and I said, you know, um, we're starting off with this meeting on the, on the 30th, 25th, excuse me, and that our, our goal is to involve the residents of Wenham, so much so that it's not the planning board's master plan, it's the residents of Wen, Wenham's master plan. So I just wanted, I'm gonna run away for a couple minutes.
Good job.
Nicely done.
Good job, Peter.
But we don't have to belabor this since it's 10 after 9, but, um, I just, I wonder if we could just flip through quickly. This is the first information session, it's not the only session that's gonna be had, but it's sort of a preliminary, um, set of slides, just to talk about why we need to do this and to get ready for the town meeting, um, so that if anyone's interested in it, they can get jazzed about, you know, what's coming next. So, we've put all of us on here.
I just want to say too, this is really a draft, and we haven't fine tuned all of the slides and everything, so there may be things that you go, no, that doesn't look great. So like this, I just noticed this seems to be shrunken.
Yeah, this is the draft, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't really say that, and I haven't had a chance to review this latest version even. But I, what I didn't want to do is go into the February 25th meeting with a set of slides we all haven't seen since your names are on it, so, um, I think this slide is basically supposed to show that our master plan has not been revised since 1960. Um, and it would be great to somewhere to provide a link to the existing plan, URL down the bottom or something, but anyway.
And I'm sorry, I don't know if everyone else, are you getting a reverb noise from Ian's speaker? Yeah, uh, I don't know if you moved back a little bit, or?
Is that better?
No, that's right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what to do.
Let's see, a little bit sci-fi.
It's what I got, so maybe I'll, I'll mute myself.
Yeah, just started.
I'm gonna mute myself and let you talk through them.
Okay, thank you, sure, I'll do that. Um, so, we just wanted to give a little brief background of the master plan that we have in place, well, it's not in place, but the mass, the last master plan was done in 1960 to 1980, as Ian suggested, we can put a URL here for a link to this. It is on the website, and we do have a master plan page started on the planning board's website page, so, um, we'll be able to put all this stuff up there, and there'll be a lot of information, and we can direct people to that. This is, um, a slide about why a master plan, we're just giving a little information about, you know, the Massachusetts general laws and what, why, um, planning boards do, uh, create the master plan, you know, they shall make a plan, blah, blah, blah. But then, here, we wanted to talk a little bit about what, what a master plan really does for a community, and what it, what, um, uh, what kinds of things that you'll have an opportunity to talk about, like identifying issues, um, and this, we feel, is more important than just the state's guidelines, um, so then we.
I will say, and I'm sorry for the reverb, but I will say that the pictures are just placeholders.
Yeah, they are.
You know, because obviously you could have a commercial building here, you could have a residential structure here.
Yeah.
And that might make some sense, um, anyway, I'll unmute again.
Yeah, we're going to change the, up the pictures to, um, we'll have a picture like Ian said of a commercial, um, we'll have residential, um, so we'll have different pictures on there. And if you have any suggestions, and you look at something and say, oh, I think this might go good there, let it, let me know, and I can make some changes too. So we, we listed the issues facing Wenham, that, you know, we kind of thought about some of the things that we hear a lot about, um, and so we'll, that, that's kind of to tell people, look, here's one of the reasons for a master plan, it can help us talk about some of these issues.
Was that third bullet point, Margaret, was that basically cellphone coverage?
Yeah, that was kind of how I wrote that, but if we could write it more plainly.
Yeah, I, as I was saying, maybe we've talked through these, I haven't had a chance to edit them yet, I, I kind of stressed.
Yeah, and Ian, Ian is going to, um, go through the actual text and make some changes. Yeah, I mean, that was one of the ones that, you know, we always have issues with wifi or, you know, cellphone coverage, some people have trouble working from home in Wenham, so we thought we'd just kind of bring that up, one of the, um, problems that we have. Um, these are the required components for the state, the states require, uh, each one of these to be included in a master plan. But then we came up with some ideas of things that you can consider. Um, things, you know, smart growth, energy, climate action, sustain, sustainability seems to be a big one in most communities. They, you can do a separate section on it, or you can, you know, kind of weave it into your master plan. Um, all those things, and there, there could be other things, basically a master plan is whatever the community wants it to be. Once you fulfill the state's requirements, it's, you know, you can put in pretty much anything. Um, then we just have a list of things that are in a master plan, um, these are the components that will, um, make up the plan. And then, let's see, then we talk just a little bit about how it's adopted. So, in Massachusetts, a master plan does not have to go to town meeting, has to be approved by the planning board, but, um, I think in Wenham, probably something that we would do, I think we would bring it to town meeting, but that would be a decision that would be made af, you know, after the fact, once everybody's, uh, been involved with it.
It can also be taken to town meeting, you know, for a sense of the meeting vote, as opposed to an up or down.
Yeah, and, and it could be exactly like, once, once everybody's, once the plan's been done, and there's been a lot of people involved, and the mass, uh, the planning board adopts it at their meeting, you can take it to master plan as, uh, to the town meeting, as sort of an unveiling, you know, and a, or a celebratory kind of thing. Say, whoa, look what we got. Um, so, we, we're giving, um, again, just the, um, the steps, and that, so then we go through some of the steps involved. Um, so we're looking to procure funding, and I think that's what part of this presentation is to do, is to gain a little, you know, give people information so we can get a little support at town meeting for the funding for the plan. Um, and then we just gate, went through the steps, there'll be a steering committee that we establish. I think once, in May, once, um, we get the funding, the funding's not available till July, but between May and July, we could get the steering committee together, that committee can actually start to work and just decide how, um, how to hire a consultant and what we're gonna need. And then the process begins, um, and, you know, we talk a little bit about that. We talk a little bit about the costs, we do have a survey online on our website that we did, um, with other communities similar to Wenham, and what the average costs were, which, we came out with our estimates. We're requesting 125 in our capital expense budget, but we also heard of some grant opportunities. There's a, a new grant with this recent legislation, there was also a lot of money that was, um, voted in that legislation, and one of them is, um, for planning purposes. So a master plan is really right there on, on their list, so I'm actually gonna work with Tom Younger, um, over the next week to see about getting in on that ma, that grant opportunity. Um, let's see, and then the next one, so those are just our, this is where we'd like people to send their support. Let your selectman know, let the FINCOM, let the planning board say, you know, to let us know that you're gonna have support it at town meeting, because that's, all of these three, uh, entities will be making recommendations at town meeting for it, so. That's about it, and then questions, can I make? Um, and then, this is the link to our website, on the town's website. So, and of course, Ian will, will do this, and she'll give more detail, and, you know, she'll say great words when she does it, so, that everybody will.
I'll explain the concept of sustainability. Um, I wonder if anyone has a question about this, or wants to take a, a crack through it with a pen and send it, um, to Margaret. Welcome to do that.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll.
Do that.
I'll send the PowerPoint to you, I've been having some difficulty sending this thing around, I don't know whether it's the size of it, or, uh, but I will try, I'll.
Your Google Docs link worked for me, so.
The Google Docs link worked, okay, all right, let's, um, so I'll see if I can do that.
By the way, did anybody go back and read the master plan from 1960? It's.
Yeah, I, it's interesting.
We're dealing with 80% of the same issues.
Yeah, exactly, there's so much that has not changed one bit, there were.
Yet so much has.
Yeah, exactly, and a lot of things in the master plan never got done. Um, they, that, for one reason or another, it's, it's hard to understand quite why, but, for me, anyway. Um, so I'll send this to everybody, uh, I'll try to do that before I get out of here tonight, and, um, have, uh, then.
You have a deadline for when you want comments back.
Yeah, if you could get me comments back by, you know, maybe next Thursday, um, because the meeting's not for two weeks, two weeks from tonight, so we've still got a couple of weeks. I'm gonna put it, I think, Ian, in, um, I'll put a, a link on the website, um, I don't know whether we want to spend the money to put it in the newspaper. The, sometimes I think the newspaper is not really the best, um, place to.
Unfortunately, Wenham doesn't actually have a newspaper right now.
Right, we just have that Chronicle and transcript, does anyone get hard copies of that?
I sometimes pick it up in the grocery store, you know, if I know there's something in there, I want to see, but.
Okay.
Actually, I get it.
Do you, Virginia?
My box, yep.
Okay, all right, well, that's good to know, I mean, I can turn it to something, you know. Um, I, I think I could put out a, um, you know, uh, some kind of, a public notice or something. We'll, we'll advertise it as a meeting, um, with the town clerk, and, so.
Put it on the website.
Yeah.
Put it on the website.
And then maybe at the board, if you could, um, promote it, and, you know, tell your friends, tell their friends. I don't know if anyone has those Facebook pages that they deal with, um, we could do an Instagram, I know the, the town does that Instagram thing, I can have Jackie pop it up there, if that's okay.
Well, isn't there the wonderful Town of Wenham Facebook page?
Yeah, it's not my thing, though, I don't, I'm not part of it, I, I think it's outside of Town Hall, I don't, I don't know that we have a Facebook.
There are a couple of presences outside of Town Hall, we're.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll reach out to them, yeah, we'll reach out to, and I'll let all the boards and committees know.
If I can interject, uh, anybody from the planning board want to, uh, come to the Tuesday, uh, Board of Selectmen, uh, session and, uh, talk it up? Either next week or the week after?
Uh, I can do that, I think.
Yeah, I'll be there anyway, I'm, I'm usually at your meeting.
Yeah, so I think, actually, it'll be, uh, a week from Tuesday, hold on a minute. We're running out of time here, because, uh, the 11, the 20th.
Are, are.
We'll have a Board of Selectmen meeting on the 23rd, yeah, right, Tuesday, the 23rd. We'll have a Board of Selectmen meeting on the 23rd, right? Tuesday, the 23rd?
Yeah.
Your session's on the 25th. So how about that, Anne? So if you want to join.
That's fine.
Board of Selectmen on that Tuesday evening, the 23rd. It reaches 40 or 50 people at least.
Okay.
Anne, how many, how many people are you presenting to?
I don't know. If anybody wants to show up.
One person, Gary.
Oh, you mean at the selects? I know. It's sort of like, haven't we done that? But then there will be other people from the public, I think is the point, that will tune in to see what's going on and those people will learn about this. And I don't know that I'm going to present the slides here. I'm just going to speak briefly about the fact that we're having this meeting on the 25th and we hope people will join in. Have a look. So.
Maybe we're too late on the agenda. Are you saying, Gary, that the 16th won't work? It's too close because it's already been posted?
Yes, because Monday's a holiday, so everything got posted today. But certainly, I mean, for what we've seen, the Board of Selectmen, you know, the, the town website and is hit by a few people. The meetings are hit by a few people and, you know, clearly you could reach out to the other committees that might have, you know, a piece of this, Open Space and Rec, anybody that has the meeting next week, they could include that in their audience as well.
I will say.
Go ahead.
I will say that I listened to the FINCOM meeting, I think it was two Saturdays ago. And the topic of master plan came up and I heard a lot of support. Margaret, I think you were on that too.
Yeah, there is support, sorry, from both. Hamilton is ahead of us on this. And I think they've invited us to participate in their process, given the joint activities. So I think there is broad support this year to get this through.
Yeah, I know. It is good. I think we do have a lot of support. And if we can get some grant money to offset it, you know, it'd be even better. So.
Anne, I'd be more than happy to be moral support for you on that meeting with the selectmen.
That sounds great. More the merrier. And Margaret, I know you'll talk about, you know, you know, remind people about this when you're staffing other committees because now you have a lot on your plate.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I will. I'll mention it to all the committees that I deal with and I, well, I, I, I'll put together a little flyer and just kind of email that out and around. So, yeah. And, and again, this is really just a preliminary opportunity for the board to start the, start people thinking about it. And so that when town meeting comes, they're, support the budget item. And then after, once we get the money, then we really start to engage the public. So.
Right.
It'd be great.
So if, if no one else has comments on this, I wonder if we can move on. We still have two more items. The first of which is this Mass DOT Environmental Notification Form, which has to do with service cuts to the MBTA. Would you?
Yeah, let me, yeah, actually, let me, um, let me pull that up. That is, um, I got that from. Second. Master Plan. Here it is. Okay, and then share that. So we got this letter. I got one sent to the Planning Board and one to the Conservation Commission. Gary, I don't know if the selectmen received it or not. You did? Yeah. So they sent it out. It's a blanket letter. They send out to everybody involved who's an MBTA community. They, you know, whether they're not really doing any work, you, if someone was doing a large project, you'd have to file an ENF, which is an environmental notification form with MIPA. But MIPA's regulations somehow require the MBTA to send one, to, to file an environmental notification form if their decrease in services 10% or more. So that's what, just what we got. And when an environmental notification form is filed, there has to be an opportunity for the communities or stakeholders or butters or whatever to comment. And that's just what this is, asking us to comment on it.
And I think, I think we can't really comment on it as a board because we really haven't had time to click on all these links and talk it through and it's 9:30 tonight. And the comments are due on the 2nd of March, but I do think that each of us as individuals might want to take a look and, excuse me, get a comment as an individual, if you feel satisfied.
Yeah. So, I mean, anyone can go on and look at it and see if they want to make any comments.
Okay. And then with that, the last thing we have is, is the meeting minutes, which I don't know. I know I sent in some headlines and I don't know if others have as well. Hello, Catherine.
Oh, bring those up. Screen just now.
Okay, great.
I looked through the minutes quickly. I'm assuming, Anne, you caught the couple of minor things, so I did not.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm not sure I caught the same minor things you caught, but here they are. I don't know if you can make that a little larger so that
Yeah.
you can see, but these are mine. They were red on my screen, but they're blue, blue here.
Yeah, they came out blue. Can you see those? Okay? Anybody?
Can you make it a little larger?
It can. Yes. Oh, all right, sorry. Did that help? I can, I can, let me go up to 150.
That's good.
Is that good? Catherine, you see those?
Yes.
You received those from Anne earlier today.
I don't know if you need me to go through them or if you want to just read them. There's one more change on the next page.
Okay, that's page one.
Just to be clear that we have to adopt the zoning district. I think we talked about that. And then the date we picked was the 25th.
25th.
It was discussion. If there aren't any questions or, I don't know, Anne, if you had more.
Nope, I think you got it. Boulder was the one that jumped out at me.
Yeah. It is bold, but. I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as for, was it the 11th of January as, I'm not sure I got the date right. As amended.
January 14th.
Sorry. 14th of January 2021 as, as edited.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Week says aye.
Aye.
Pascarella says aye.
Anderson aye.
Clay says aye.
Aye. Virginia Rogers is not voting at this point in the meeting. So that being the case, we've approved those. I wonder if I can have a motion to adjourn.
Can, not to step on the joy of the motion to adjourn. Can I just add one thing in your last bullet point, Anne? Actually, two very quick things. Margaret, you brought up the memo that we got from Town Council about the, the MBTA community issue.
Yeah, I think that was me, but yeah.
Oh, that was you, Anne. So.
Yeah.
Margaret, could you ask Robin to focus specifically on the issue of what constitutes reasonable size for the district we have to put in place?
Oh, oh, you're referring to the.
The overlay.
Yeah, Robin, it sounded like Robin was going to get some commentary to us, but it wasn't on the agenda and.
Yeah.
So would you ask her on that particular point?
Yes.
What constitutes reasonable size for the district that needs to be adopted?
Yeah, that's still to be determined. We're still for guidance from the state.
Okay.
DHD.
Maybe she could address that in the memo. With the draft of the memo we have, does it really?
Yeah, I know. I think everyone's asking that question.
I think the other relevant question, oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, no, go ahead. I'll wait.
Thought you were finished. The other relevant question, the other question I had was an issue that you brought up in the meeting last week about the provision of the act that says that a court in reviewing a decision by a board can request or may request, I think is the language in the statute, a bond from the the, the, the challenging party. I'd love to see that written up too.
Anne, there was, I think, a really strong piece in Massler's Weekly about that and basically how it's a paper tiger statute. That was their phrase. I'll see if I can find that and I'll send it to Margaret. Maybe he sent it around.
Dan, was that written by, was that written by Michael Pill?
I'll have to find it.
I, I just received a email today with a, it sounded like the same article where I, I think what he was saying was something like the costs are going to be limited to the actual litigation costs, which are typically small. They're not attorney's fees. So it's, but I'll, I'll try to track it down as well.
Yeah, I was, I was interested in that language in the statute and, you know, there may be other issues too that we want to have her look at, but those are the two things that seemed most relevant to our work.
So before we adjourn, just the other point I was going to mention and yeah, I guess, Margaret, weigh in on this if I'm not supposed to comment on this because this is about an observation I had watching the public hearing tonight as a, I was watching it as a resident. But for, for our future board meetings, I, I found it really troubling, the back and forth that happened between the engineers and the argument tonight. And yeah, I, I, I don't want to get into it because I'm, I'm recused on the matter, but just as a matter of our procedure.
Sure.
That those three engineers arguing back and forth with each other, I, I thought was just not appropriate.
Completely unhelpful and, you know, contradicting them each other and.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and getting personal.
Hmm, yeah, that, that was really inappropriate.
Yeah, it's probably best.
I'm not supposed to comment either, so I should shut up.
Probably best not to talk too much about it, but.
I would like to comment on it because I, I was fully prepared at some point to say, to say that the, their comments were out of order. It just kind of snowballed. And so I, you know, I think that perhaps what we need in public hearings, and this has happened before, just because we assume that we've got generally reasonable people and that they will throw insults at another. And I think, just think we have to be a lot more on the ready to stop any comment that is inappropriate.
On any, on any case.
Bailiff with a hook.
Yeah, well, I, I think, Virginia, that it's, it's really a function of the Zoom format because if we were in session, it would be one person at the podium at a time. And they wouldn't have had the opportunity to do that. So I don't know if, if, you know, Margaret, you have the mute button or.
Yeah, and I do. And I haven't, you know, utilized that really because we, we haven't had a situation like this come up. But in future, you know, in the future, I can mute anyone. And I think it's the responsibility of the chairperson to say enough, you know, but it's hard to do that. Like you say, in Zoom, you can't, you know, it, it, sometimes it's a slower.
Right.
You know.
There's no gavel.
Yeah.
Needs to be a little gavel button down here.
Going forward, I absolutely can mute at any time, people on, on the meetings. And if, if whoever's chairing the meeting wants to say, you know, you need to mute them because.
It's a little difficult if, if you're in a public hearing and a member of the public is speaking. I think, you know, if here you actually have to say, these remarks are a little too personal and out of line.
Yeah.
And rather than just, you can't just mute a member of the public.
Yeah, no. Right. And I mean, we give people warning that, you know, we will mute you, you need to stop whatever you're saying. So yeah, and I, I think we'll be able to handle that going forward.
And, and by the way, Virginia, that was not a commentary on your hand.
No, no, no. I, I was aware of it. It was out of control. And I was trying to remember one of the few times when, when David actually ejected someone from the meeting.
David Geeky? Yeah.
Yeah.
David would do that.
Yeah, not, I mean, it took a lot, but I can certainly see him gabbling somebody out of the meeting. I just, I just thought it would be, in a way, it would be cuter productive. But I, you know, I obviously tried to stop them at, at points when I thought they were getting, talking about things that weren't weren't appropriate for the meeting. But I was worried that we would end the meeting and then we would be hearing all of the information that.
Yeah. Yeah.
You probably should not.
Yeah, I'm probably going to recommend that we don't discuss the case itself any further.
So can I?
I do have one more point before we, before I ask for a motion to adjourn. But is Mr. Clay, did you have something?
Well, actually, all I wanted to say is one of the great pleasures of being on the CPC is having Leo Mastronzi talk forever and then complain about not being able to motion to close the meeting.
Okay, well, you know, as it may, I, I would like to ask the board to consider whether we should start these meetings at 7:00. I think we set them at 7:30 a while ago, back when we were all commuting or some of us had to commute to Boston.
Yeah.
To make it more convenient. And none of us are commuting now and they're going very late. I'm looking at my watch and it's quarter to 10:00. So.
Great, I, great idea.
I don't think we have to vote on that tonight. We can do another 7:30 meeting or we could vote on that tonight.
Could we move to adjourn and to reconvene at 7:00 PM on March?
Clever.
Very good. Mr. Pascarella, I will second that.
Oh, I don't know what the March date was though. I didn't have that.
It's March 11th.
Okay.
March 11th. And I will second that motion.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye. Clay, aye.
Pascarella, aye. Ms. Rogers, do you want to vote on that?
Oh, sure. I'll vote aye.
Vote to adjourn.
Ayes have it. And we have, are now adjourned.